This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, the time is 6:01. This is the regular January meeting of the Southampton Local School Committee. We call to order with five out of five members present, including our building principal and our superintendents. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of December 11th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Kim to approve seconded by Margaret. Any discussion or amendments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Passed unanimously. Any member for public comment? Seeing no one. Circulation warrants, we're still continuing those electronically. Any announcements or correspondence? Nope. Principals report.
Okay. Our enrollment continues to be the same as last month, 481 students, although over the last couple of days, we did get a couple of new students, but I'll report out on that next month. Some of the activities this past month, the past three weeks, I would say, because we had a week of vacation. Grade five crafted gingerbread houses with their reading buddies on Friday, December 20th. Our music teacher, Mrs. Lafond, led the fifth grade students in holiday songs across the hallways of Norris School to get everyone in the holiday spirit. That was on Friday, December 20th as well. Mrs. Webster's kindergarten class gave out kindness cards to staff members. Preschool students were looking for the gingerbread man after they read the story and did a really great activity on Thursday, December 19th. Our second language learners will be participating in access testing beginning this week. Our grade one through six students will be participating in the second round of Fastbridge interim assessments this week. Some of our faculty staff updates. Our teachers met in vertical teaching teams on December 13th on that half day for professional development. Our technology department has checked all computers to make sure our devices are compatible for upcoming MCAS testing in the spring. Our school-based occupational therapist, Carly Frye, has accepted a position in a clinical setting. Her position was posted and we are happy to announce that Teresa Maudsley will join us on January 21st. Cafeteria manager Kathleen Keaty is leaving to become a district level food service director in another district. Her position is posted and we will begin interviewing soon. Our PTO provided bagels, coffee, and hot chocolate for all staff prior to the holiday break, which was really nice. And we have again ordered from a local vendor, Mantis Graphics, for our school spirit wear. Many families ordered. And the PTO along with Mrs. Lukasiewicz made sure that all families received their orders prior to the vacation. And that's all I have.
Any questions or discussion? None. Superintendents report.
Good evening, everyone. So there's a couple items on there that slid through. They're really more specific to the high school and Hampshire Regional, so I'm just going to skip those. The document that we've shared with you previously that has the fiscal problems that the forensic work is addressing was updated and shared. The central office budget was presented on Tuesday, the...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, thank you. So that we could bring some people together. We invited representative stakeholders from various communities, budget subcommittees, finance committees, select board, et cetera. And there was a good showing of stakeholders at the meeting. We also had Michael Fredette and Amy Drake attend and present the work that they've been doing, which kind of dovetailed into the presentation and really reinforced the central office team's efficacy in the work that we are doing to move us forward. On 12/19, Dawn and I met with the auditors and had a really candid conversation about the upcoming audit, which of course is a late audit of our 23. And Dawn is on her way, so I wanted to leave any questions specifically that she might be able to answer until she gets here. Probably one of the bigger pieces for me is the finalization of my narrative and update for the school committee for my evaluation. That was shared last Friday. In addition, there was stakeholder surveys sent out to all the community, parents, families, guardians, teachers, and principals. I plan this Friday to send out some secondary surveys to central office team and the staff in the central office. I'm looking for feedback. I'm looking for input. I pride myself on being a reflective practitioner, and I truly want to address the needs that are being communicated and make sure that we're documenting the feedback, the input, the good and the bad, as Dawn always says, the good, the bad, and the ugly, so that we are able to do what we need to do to move forward positively.
Questions? Discussion? None? Okay. Chairs report. Vito just touched on it, but I forwarded off to everybody the links for the superintendent evaluation. Just a reminder that we as a committee have to complete our evaluation as a group and then send it off to be included with everything else. I'll go back and find the upcoming deadline that we have to abide by or that we should try for and share that. Other than that, I think it's just business as normal. Any questions on that part?
When'd you send that out?
Today. Hour and a half ago. I was on vacation last Friday when it came out.
No, I think I got it.
I pushed it out in a link.
Oh, to everybody?
There was, yeah, there was a Southampton School Committee link.
Gotcha.
So I sent it out to everyone.
Mary sent mine in, so.
Yes.
No, I don't mean that as any other than just like...
She's just on it.
No.
She's a star. She had a lot of negative things to say, so she was quick. Hampshire Regional School Committee update.
So a couple things. We got a very, very, very preliminary look at the budget. And we're going to see some increases in the salary line, which we expected. Those are contractual increases. We're seeing an increase in our transportation line due to some specific needs that incoming students have. And we're seeing an increase in our out-of-district placements due to specific needs from students coming in. But we are hoping that some of the new revenue that has been either identified or applied for in terms of extraordinary relief for special ed costs and circuit breaker and some other, you know, possibilities with grants, that we'll see an increase on the revenue that will hopefully, you know, kind of counterbalance some of those increases. And we talked a lot at our last meeting about the cell phones policy. And so the working group at the high school, which consists of teachers, students, staff, administration, have concluded that they will continue using the yonder pouches for the rest of the year with the goal eventually to get to a point of what we call off and away. So changing the culture of the school so that we don't have to have mandatory yonder pouches and incur that expense, but that the culture reflects this desire to have students have their cell phones off and away all day long. So the teachers are 100% for this, or like 90, 99% for this. Parents are about split on it. Students publicly say they hate it. Privately, they'll say, you know, it's actually, I'm doing better in class and I have less to worry about during the day. So that's kind of what we're hearing. Vito, do we want to talk about handle with care at this point? Or, because we spent a lot of time in our meeting with that.
We're going to have a presentation.
Or is that, we're going to talk about that? Okay. Oh, and that's part of the presentation? Then never mind. So we will do what we did at our meeting here. Excellent. Okay. That's it.
Questions?
Can I ask about the yonder pouch thing? So when this year's seniors graduate, do they turn their pouches in?
Yes.
Okay. So it's kind of like a revolving?
Yes, but if, you know, if they disappear or, you know, so we're looking at maybe $4,000 to $5,000 a year if we continue it. So the initial investment was about $25,000.
Okay.
Vito, I don't know if you want to say anything about the competency determination and what we're doing for our seniors?
That was one of the things that was in the report that I didn't talk about just because it was specific to the high school. But because the ballot question removed MCAS as the competency determination for graduation, the state has shifted, if you will, the responsibility to the local. And so what we're looking at is our graduation requirements, of course, are still in force. But what we're doing is we're collaborating with the counseling office, the principal, and my office to generate a draft of the competency determination. We're going to look at coursework that students have accomplished and completed. And we haven't gotten into the meat and potatoes conversation yet, but what we intend to is bring that proposal to the school committee, Hampshire Regional, for approval in February. Just so you know, we're also collaborating with our peers outside of the districts. And we're on a list serve with superintendents, and we are sharing our proposals so we can kind of look at what everybody's doing. And there'll be some consistency across the state with respect to what is happening locally.
So there's just a few, a couple of seniors that this affects who have not yet passed all of MCAS. And so it's just affecting a couple. But we're, you know, working through that.
Are the MCAS still being given?
Yes.
They're just not a requirement for graduation.
The MCAS is a requirement from the state for us to administer.
Yeah.
However, it no longer is able to be considered the competency determination for graduation.
Okay.
So they're still asking us to give it. It's mandated that we do. It's going to be part of accountability and how we are judged as a district and as schools. However, it cannot be used to fulfill competency determination.
Okay. Great. That's all I have. PTO has not met. We meet next week.
Good. School council?
School council has not met since our last meeting, but the next meeting is Tuesday, the 14th.
It's going to go fast. Collaboration for Educational Services update?
Next meeting is the January 29th.
Okay. Select Board update. We're working on the budget. Which brings us to the budget and finance team update. Dawn?
Go ahead, Dawn.
Ninety seconds. Give us the highlights.
Perfect. Okay.
We do have copies of the preliminary budget that was passed out along with the adults.
And Margaret mentioned that at the high school, we looked at a preliminary draft. I'm not even going to call it, it's really not a preliminary draft. What we had done is looked at the highest cost line codes, the highest line codes in the budget, and then did a review of those. Transportation is a big one. Sped is a really big driver. And we have, I mean, I have what was distributed to the Hampshire Regional School Committee. And if you'd like that, I brought it here.
Does it go so far to break down to what the allocations would be to the individual costs?
No. No. I think this is what I would say in the 90 seconds allotted. I would say that we have an increase right now without any revenues applied of a million dollars. The reason I bring it up here is because, is because Southampton gets about 55% of that allocation. So that's why I'm bringing it up.
It doesn't include revenues.
It does not include revenues.
Express, everyone.
What I'm hearing tonight should be worst case scenario. Give or take.
I think that that depends on the revenues. That might be the worst case on the expenses, but I can't say.
Expecting any revenues to go negative?
I'm expecting the revenues may be down from last year.
Okay.
Which would make the assessments up from last year. But I would not bet my life on any of, any of that yet. That requires balances in the accounts, which we're still working diligently toward. There is, there are some things, and John, maybe we would get together offline, because I talked with Scott today, and he told me that he wasn't here when the budget was developed last year. That you actually were primarily, okay, the two of you were responsible. So the one thing that I have a concern about, that I've looked at, that I'm not, I cannot determine without talking with you, is where certain transportation costs are budgeted, like out-of-district transportation. Did you budget for those in the municipality?
For Norris or for?
For Norris.
For Norris, it's outside the school budget. The town pays it directly out of the general fund.
Oh, okay. So it wouldn't go either in the school budget or the municipal budget?
It's in the municipal budget, a separate line item.
As a separate line item?
I'll tell you, our books show that we only paid three quarters or four quarters to Smith-Vogue, as an example. There's still $400,000 sitting there that nobody ever gave us an invoice for.
Okay. And it's funny, you should bring that up.
That got paid somewhere.
Well, it's, I don't know. I don't know about that. I actually called today to speak to Scott and to speak to Bradley about that. So what happened last year is there was an agreement, as I understand it, between Mickey, you know, the former business manager, and each of the town administrators of the five towns, that the central office would no longer be receiving the invoices for Smith-Vocational tuition or the transportation, that those would go directly to the town. And that they would be paid for directly from the town under chapter 74.
Transportation or the?
Both. The tuition and the transportation.
Tuition went through central office because?
In the past.
Rachel would send it to me. I'd have to sign it as chair of Norris.
Yes.
To pay that bill.
Uh huh. And that's how it was in the past. And then he changed the procedure. And so that's why I called Scott and I called Bradley and I said, we need to identify if the bills for the Smith tuition have been paid, because we don't have any of those invoices.
Okay.
So that's number one. Number two is the transportation. We had no transportation invoices. They were sent directly to Southampton. I talked with Bradley, who said, oh yes, I have been receiving those, but since we never paid them in the past, I didn't pay them. So we have, let's see, January, March, April, May, June from last fiscal year that will need to be paid. And those will have to be put on the warrant as prior year bills. And then starting in July of this year, he's going to catch up on those.
Yeah.
And I spoke to Scott. He said he never actually had a communication with prior business off manager about that. And so I'm not sure how that was left, but that's how it's operating in every, every town so far.
I'm fine if there's time next week and maybe even get Scott or Bradley involved with it.
Okay. So those, those are the, those two items. I'm glad to hear about the out-of-district transportation, because I hadn't seen that anywhere on a budget. And it's supposed to be about $111,000 this year and $115,000 next year. So it sounds like that's covered.
Yeah, out of the Norris budget.
Uh huh. Then the other thing is the benefits. My, my understanding is that we've gotten some word that those would be double digit, the health plan, the Hampshire County, yeah, that that might be a double-digit increase. Although when I spoke with Scott today, he said that they had heard that it would be 8%, like as it was last year. So they haven't settled on it yet at the county level, but we have factored into the Hampshire Regional budget 11%. I just wanted to mention that because it could come down. We don't know. And we're making incremental progress on all other kinds of things. If anybody had any specific questions regarding any of the presentations or anything else, I'd be glad to address those. But I think that the document that Dylan is reading?
Yep.
That...
Running narrative.
The running narrative, the running narrative, that hasn't been updated since the holidays and such. But we continue to make progress. And the one notable thing on there that isn't on there is that MTRS is, it continues to inch forward, the Mass Teachers Retirement Association reconciliations. We are almost caught up in every town. So that's really positive news. The other positive news is that the central office itself, the training that's going on there and the encouragement to analyze work and work as analysts as opposed to data entry clerks is moving forward. The people who are working on things like the fact that they're being challenged and asked to do more in analysis and that sort of thing. So I think that's part of the issue. When somebody was given something and they were just told to put it in, there wasn't a lot of thought. There wasn't, there weren't connections being made to other things. And I'm trying to encourage that. And I think that's going pretty well. So.
The question I have, and I don't know if you have an answer yet, but we got an email late today, and there was a phone call afterwards. Did we get an extension on our February 1st deadline? Or we don't know yet?
Based on...
I would say no.
Based on the conversation we had, he understands that February 1 is not a realistic date. He made reference to the fact that in the past, it's been May, it's been June, unacceptable. If that were to happen, they would go to the 112 allotment. Dawn and I subsequently have made some phone calls to bring more resources to bear from the MARS, which is the Mass Association of Regional Schools. So we had a conversation with Dr. Heneman today. We're going to meet with him via Zoom. So we're again going to try and bring more resources to bear to bring capacity to address the issues that we have.
And I know it's a moving target, but like right now, if you had to pick a date in the future when this would be done or ready to be submitted, are we talking?
You talking the year-end reports?
Not February 1st, but is it March 1st? Is it April?
Well, I think, I would say, don't record this, but that's too late.
Too late.
I would say that the, we are targeting getting the municipal end-of-year reports. So for the three municipals, done first. And I would say that there's a chance that we could make March 1st.
Okay. It's a moving target.
Stop there. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
When are we going to be able to start working on our fiscal '26 budget?
We are working on them now. We are working on them now. Eliza and I have to get together. I was out sick and then she was out sick. But we have, in the central office, been working on all of the aspects of your budgets that are, that need central office input, the special education, the transportation. The bus transportation contract is three years with two optional renewal years. And it's up, I mean, the three years ends this, this year. And so Vito and I are meeting with Durham Transportation on Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday of this following, of this coming up week, and going to talk with them about any potential reductions in, in the fees that they have charged. It's a 4% increase from where we are this year. And that's one thing. The other thing, I don't know if anybody's ever seen the contract. Have you seen that, John?
Yeah, we, we got it last year when we had it.
Okay. So the way it's allocated to the schools is very confusing. And we're asking them to clarify a number of things. So I don't know if that will impact the allocations to individual schools, but we have to get things a little, a little clearer. It's very confusing the way it is. And, and I can't say for sure if, if everybody is being assessed appropriately. So I'm trying to get down to the bottom line of everything so that I understand it and feel confident saying, yeah, you've got the right charge. I don't, I can't say that right now, but we're meeting to, to do that. So that's a big expense. All of the settled contracts have been factored in. And for Hampshire Regional, the salaries went up about $300,000. And if the budget had been done differently, it would be going up $500,000, meaning there were a couple of extra $100,000 in the budget in this year, primarily because the principal had reduced two positions, but it never got reflected in the, in the budget. And so it's not that there was extra money in there. The other thing I can say is it's, it could have been an affirmative decision on the behalf of the business administrator to leave that in there because it was a contract negotiation that hadn't been settled yet. So I don't know. But if we take, you know, because that was that extra 200, it is making the increase a little bit less this year. So.
Well, potentially that money is available to help with any additional forensic that needs to happen, because the communities proportionally have already paid.
Yes. Potentially. So when we get to the, when we get to actually putting down balances?
Yep.
Then we'll know if there, if there is money left. And I think, as Margaret had said, there's circuit breaker, there are other things that may offset some of the increase in sped costs for next year.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dawn.
You went over, but it's okay.
My 90 seconds.
X under New Business, Chief Illingsworth.
Good evening. My name's Ian Illingsworth, in case I've never met you before. I'm a police chief. This is Officer Dan Hurley.
Hi.
He is our selected school resource officer. We consider him a school liaison because we don't have a school resource officer dedicated to the school. So he's our liaison for the town. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to just introduce myself as well as Dan, see if you had any questions about our roles, what it plays with the school. We have a very good working relationship with Eliza. And one of the things I also wanted to describe to you is contractually, I have the authority with proper discretion to choose, to handpick a school liaison officer. It supersedes contracts. The law allows us, allows the chiefs to do that. And I selected Dan for specific reasons. Dan's a military veteran. He's been in very hostile areas, deployed. And so that provides him with a very strong sense of security, in particular with institutions. I also selected him because he was a former firefighter. He's also an EMT, and he works well with the fire department. He's a liaison to the fire department. And currently with school responses, fire and police are integrated with the school responses now. And we're in that process of integrating fire. And again, Dan is a perfect liaison for that. And Dan likes kids. So that's, that's obviously very important. But before I go any further, I just, Dan, I don't want to speak too much about Dan. I'll let him give you a little bit of his resume. And then one of the things we did want to discuss before, you know, we leave is the Handle With Care program. We just wanted to bring it to your attention. I believe it went to the Hampton Regional School Committee. So I don't know the results of that. So maybe if you could enlighten us on how it went, Margaret, that would be great. But in the meantime, here's, here's Dan.
Evening, everybody. I've met some of you before, some of you I don't know. My name's Dan Hurley, officer here in Southampton for the past five years, both part-time and full-time. I was a student at Norris from 96 to 2002. That was a long time ago. And I graduated from Hampshire Regional. I've had my EMT license since 2010. I worked for the fire department next door for about 10 years. Been an Army medic for about 10 years, two tours overseas to combat locations. I still currently am serving in the reserves out of West Hartford. I've had the opportunity to work with Principal Pluta quite a bit already, doing some training for the teachers, lockdown drills, discussing going forward, things that we might want to change, things we definitely want to keep the same. Our prior school liaison, Scott Gove, is over in East Hampton now. I maintain a really good relationship with him. We're really good friends. Anytime I have questions, I call him, he answers me right away. I see him probably once a week. And that's, I'm terrible at talking about myself, so that's it about me. Some of the stuff we've done already is responsive active threats. And all of the teachers were present for that presentation. I got really good feedback from it. I believe it went really well. We've started doing a little bit of stuff with behavioral threat assessments, which is coming down from the FBI and Secret Service. That's kind of like a getting ahead of issues before they start. Some of these things are problems either at home or emotional distress, where we can kind of get in there, get the student or the family help before it ends up becoming an issue further down the road. And we're kind of like at the beginning of that process. So it's very important for us to identify that stuff as soon as possible. And that's about it, about me. Any questions from anybody?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate, thank you for your support. And then, sure. So we were brought made aware of the Handle With Care program, and then it got brought to Hampshire Regional. We went up there for their presentation. Did, any feedback on how the meeting went with them?
Why don't you talk about it first?
Okay.
And say what it, what it is, because I think a lot of people don't even know what it is. And then that, that gives me some context to talk about what happened at our meeting.
Sure. So we were approached by April from the Children's Advocacy Center of Hampshire County about this program. That's, it's very, it's a very light lift for the school, but it's, it's very, very positive for students. Basically, we would set up a system that if first responders, police, firefighters, EMTs make contact with a student outside of school, whether that's something that happened with their family or at their house, if their house caught fire, a relative got transported to the hospital, a relative had, you know, dealings with police, any sort of thing like that, we could identify that the student is, that the child is a student in the Hampshire Regional school system. And the, we'd be able to give the school a notification with the child's name, age, and what school they go to. And that is the only information they would receive, other than the actual Handle With Care notification, just so the student's principal... Care notification, just so the students, principal and teachers would know that something happened. The student may not be acting the way they usually do. They may not be performing up to what they usually do. And there is probably a reason why. We don't tell them the reason why, but it just gives them kind of a heads up so they don't get disciplined or punished for that. Either they're acting out or saying inappropriate things or just not answering appropriately or acting appropriately.
Can I expand on that a little?
Absolutely.
Part of that program, which is important, is that there would be some form of professional development with the staff. And the Handle With Care, the, all the staff is sent is HWC, that acronym, Handle With Care. And essentially what it does is it just lets the staff know that, you know, the child might be a little off, perhaps because of police, whatever presence that could have been traumatic in his, in the child's life. It's crucial that that is the only information that's passed on and no other questions are asked of the child. It's just so the staff is aware that if for some reason a child is not behaving in the typical manner, there might have been a reason why, and this could give them an indication, please handle this child with care because something's going on.
How would you envision the communication going?
It's through an email system.
Okay, so an email from your department?
From our, our staff. So let's say, let's just say, for example, there was a disturbance at a household and police presence were there. They wouldn't get any information that there was a disturbance, none of that information. The evening supervisor or shift OIC, the officer in charge, would send an email to designated staff with child's name and HWC, Handle With Care. And that is it. So we also, we did bring some just copies of a very brief description where we can hand out, but we, we just wanted to let this, let you think about this. You know, I'm certainly an advocate for it, but I'm outside the school system. So this is something that is going to have to be.
So in essence, it could be, we could designate, you know, that communication going to the building principal and probably the superintendent.
I don't think it's a school committee decision. That's what I was just gonna say.
Well, my, so when I was approached by the police chief to consider this, it was under the disguise, would the school committee be all right if we implemented this at Norris? Because I think there was potential, there might have been a different take at Hampshire Regional. Do you want to weigh in, Vito?
Absolutely. So I, I agree wholeheartedly about the efficacy of the program, how it's working. Principal, Principal Holtz and myself attended a presentation up at GCC and it really dovetails nicely with trauma-informed care and the work that we're doing with social emotional learning of students in the buildings. I initially reached out to our attorney and asked her for a guidance on the process because there was an MOU that is going to be generated that would have the, the five towns, police and the superintendent's signatures. So I asked her, does the school committee need to approve and be a part of the MOU? And she said, no. But what she said was what needs to happen is communication and collaboration around how this program is, is outlined and how it works. So when we talk about notification, the thought that I have is the QR code that is being generating, that's generating the notification would go to myself and the assistant superintendent. We would then communicate with the appropriate principal who would then communicate appropriately with the staff who has been trained. And we've already talked about April and Kara from, from the Child Advocacy Center coming and doing those presentations at faculty meetings. So we, we're modeling our participation on those towns that are already participating. One of the strongest participants is Belcher Town. And the chief there in Belcher Town did a really great job with his presentation on how it works and how we keep confidentiality, but also bring compassion to bear in the, in the instructional space to make sure that people are aware of the need to handle with care, not why. And so there's, maybe if a student starts acting out, it's, hey, Vito, let's get you down to this, the adjustment counselor. Hey, Vito, let's get you down to the vice, vice principal so you can have a conversation. So, so it's not a huge reaction, but it's a response to a student that might be in need.
Yeah, we had something similar to this at the high school I taught at in California, a school of 3,500 kids, huge school. And we had a assistant counselor whose only job was to notify teachers if a kid was having a tough time. We got no information and we didn't even use an acronym. I think it was just like, hey, what, you know, heads up kind of thing. And so the way it might work in the classroom is I get that notification and we have an exam that day. And so I quietly arrange with that child that we are not, you are not taking this exam today because something happened. And, you know, and I never knew what it was that happened unless they chose to tell me and sometimes they did. But, you know, it was, it was so helpful as a teacher to be able to do this.
Right, right. And in this case, the staff, even, you know, if we were to use that system that you described, which I think is a great system, they wouldn't even, you wouldn't even know what it's for.
Correct.
All it is, is simply Handle With Care. So it's not like Handle With Care, PS, hey, we just locked up somebody for domestic violence in that household. That's not going to happen. We do not do that. That's, in fact, that's against the law for us to do. But, so this is simply, and I can tell you through my experience going to households where there has been some form of traumatic event, sometimes multiple times with police presence, and you want to be able to give, you know, some sort of indication to the staff of a school, of Norris, Eliza in particular, hey, stuff's going on at this person's home. So that's not what we say with this, but you, you want to let the person know that. You want to let the school know that this child, you know, be aware that there's, there might be something going on or there's something did happen. It could be, it could be their, their parent tripped and broke their leg and the ambulance was there. That's Handle With Care. It could be anything. It's not just disturbances. It's not just police presence. It could be a fire, anything that's traumatic. And, you know, when you're, when you're, you know, even if you're in high school and there's lights, whether they're red lights or blue lights at your house, it's, it's going to have an impact on you. So we just want to make sure that if we can, the child gets as much counseling if needed, or at least if it's, if it's not counseling, but the teacher knows if he's.
And it was received very well by the high school school committee. There was some concern about privacy and what we, we heard, so the representatives from the Child Advocacy Center were there and they were very firm about the fact that no other information is given and that this program has been nothing but successful. There has been no complaints in any of the jurisdictions in Massachusetts where it's been implemented and it's been going on in Virginia since the 90s. I'm not sure. They probably communicated by phone then, but, you know, that's, it's been going on and I think it's probably going to spread to more communities.
And just to close the loop with the MOU, I will be drafting it, but sending it to Attorney Roach for, for her guidance on the language in it.
All right, so from your, your report back to the committee is you're, everything you know right now, you're moving forward.
Everything I know right now is that the next step would be that follow-up conversation with Attorney Roach with the, with the MOU. That's going to reflect the chiefs of the various departments with which we work. And then we would have to go through the training and, and proceed. Yes.
Okay. Questions?
Questions? Sure. I think it's a great program. I fully support it. I'm just curious, is there a, a threshold or a determination that's made when this is sent? Is it every single time there's contact with the first responder?
That, that's the intent, yes.
My only concern, I guess my only thought around that, and again, this is not negative on this, would be in the sense of, two scenarios I can think of. One of them from my personal, which was when my two-year-old got ahold of my wife's cell phone and dialed 911 and, you know, and she said, no, I, you know, I couldn't hang up, but the police responded.
Sure.
And, you know, there was.
The threshold, that is, the threshold is something that could.
Right. Okay. That's, that's what I was asking.
Maybe if we.
Oh, Teresa handled it.
Kick the door down.
Yeah.
No. There's accidents, 911s happen all the time. We don't consider that traumatic.
And then the second side of that is I'm sure there's houses where there is regular first responder responses, not because of, not because of a negative impact. Let's say you have an elderly family member who is, gets transported to the hospital on a somewhat of a regular basis. And the communication threshold around that concern being is that if the school's getting a notification every two weeks that there is a, you know, HWC notification every two weeks with no additional information, is there going to be either an over-response or a, a stigmatization of that child out of concern that there is some.
Something else.
Horrific thing going on, when in fact it's grandma with COPDs, needs to go to the hospital. You know?
No, no, I think that's a valid, a valid point. And I, you know, I think we would use discretion. You know, if there's a constant response and we don't see any impact, then, then no, we wouldn't make that, you know.
Okay. That's what's crazy. So there's a discretionary part.
There is discretion, yes. We, it's, it's all about trauma, right? And, and trauma is based on the individual, as we know. So, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to make that definition of what's traumatic and what's not. But if there's regular police presence because, you know, like you said, somebody's sick and they're going to the hospital commonly, you know, after the couple of times, I'm sure that presence of the ambulance is not going to have the same effect as, as the first time.
Right. Okay. Those are good points. And I think it might follow up to that with, is there any, you know, as someone who's spent, you know, many, many years working in the mental health delivery system, PD around, you know, trauma-informed approaches and, and that kind of thing? Cause, cause while I completely appreciate you have a child who comes in with, with Handle With Care warning and kind of giving extra room and support for that, you know, those are the only, the only time we would see those is when there's been, been a first responder response. You could have a child who's acting out in class who there is no first responder response, but has experienced trauma in the household. And I'm just curious is how, what is the district and the school done with, with trauma-informed training and trauma-informed approaches in, in PD?
We've had some with our special ed department especially. And I can't think of, I can't think of specifically, but I know, I know that we have, whether it was a one hour or a two hour thing, but not like a full day of, you know, we haven't focused on it, but we've, we've touched upon it in order to inform educators how to respond with students in your classroom who might have trauma come from a trauma background sort of thing.
And in my experience in West Springfield specifically, especially post-COVID, where we saw more serious spikes, if you will, in, in crisis responses at schools, host, ambulances coming to school because a kid is in crisis. We did some really structured PD over the course of years to make sure that we were meeting the needs of the teachers so that they could meet the needs of the students. And it wasn't just isolated to special services. It was across the board. You know, in, in the time I've been here, I haven't seen the level of need that I saw there. So I can imagine that it would be more of a targeted, kind of a laser approach to that professional development and with a focus on other things. But, you know, we, we need to look at the data and, and see what's going on with respect to the trauma or the, the, the needs that our students are conveying.
Amy talked a lot about that when she did her.
She did.
Interview, talking about a lot of trauma response care and stuff like that.
And just to be clear, where Amy was coming from at LPVUC. She was a program in facility. So she took a lot of students that were suffering from trauma and had some significant.
But she probably has good insight on like what would be something that we could work on.
Yes.
I'm happy to collaborate on resources too.
Thank you.
If you, if you ever want to talk about that.
Very good.
And Chief, I appreciate your support of this program too.
Yeah, you got it. Any other questions that you want to just ask relative to our, our roles just before we go?
So was he, he's not in a school like at any time?
No, no.
He's just.
So if there was an incident that requires police, that's not an emergency.
He would go.
He would be the, the officer.
Chief, the liaison is just within Southampton or would it?
It's just Southampton.
It is.
Unless we had some collaborative agreement with, with West Hampton and that's, that was a regional, but as of right now, no. And that's why we don't consider him a school resource officer. He's fully trained as a school resource officer. However, we, he's our liaison.
He only deals with.
There was a time, maybe three years ago, where there were budgeted dollars allocated.
Yeah, and then there was, they had a part-time.
Yeah.
SRO up there and it was one of our officers.
Before COVID.
Yeah.
Actually, I follow up on that. There was some discussion at one point about restarting a DARE program. Is DARE a program that is still actually used by?
It is still used. It is, you know, it is, it's not the DARE that.
That we would.
We went to.
It's, it's more about just making good decisions. It's not, it's not based solely on drugs, about making good decisions. That, that's the premise of it. That is, that, that is available. He is not a DARE certified officer, but it's, but that is something that, you know, if, if we can discuss if that's something that you ever wanted to come back.
Well, I, I, my personal take is I prefer having, you know, when, for positive reasons, you know, uniformed officers without utility belts in the schools from time to time, I think is, does a lot of positive and goodwill. And I don't know what the certification cost for the DARE is. Has Scott had it, right?
Scott had it. I, yes, he did.
But I know the annual cost was $3,000 after certification.
Yeah, that was his wages and, and the supplies.
And I, I think the purpose of, of this program matches up perfectly to the opiate settlement funds that for two years, we have been unable to spend and we get $36,000 a year. So I think whatever the initial training cost is, that might be something we can get through the select board.
Is there a better program that you know of or would recommend?
Not that I specifically know, but perhaps, you know.
First DARE?
You might know of through your experience or Eliza, through your experience in, in the field.
Well, the other thing, do you remember the DARE like Dylan and I do as our childhood?
As my DARE officer told me not to smoke and then went outside and smoked. Yes, I remember.
We might want to get a refresh on what the current program looks like.
Well, no, that's what I'm asking is obviously it's not the same, like you said. It's more about making good choices.
The act is still DARE, but it's not drug abuse resistance education. Something about proper decision-making.
Right. I just didn't know if, as someone who has seen that program currently, if you had feelings on there, maybe that's not the best fit. Maybe there's a better program. That's all I'm saying.
One good thing I think like John elaborated on is having a, a, a good presence, right? You have, you don't, you're not going to go in there with looking like a soldier, right? You can't do that anymore, actually. So what's important though, is that connection with students may open up conversation about potential threats.
Right.
And that's, that's why, that's why I think it's important to have some form of connection between law enforcement and the school.
Yeah, I can actually speak to that. So my child was at Norris and got to meet Officer Gove and then went to the high school and at one point needed to talk to an officer. And that relationship had already been established. And it was just so much easier for that conversation to happen.
Right. And, you know, as we all know with social media, sometimes social media can influence people of all ages, right? But social media sometimes doesn't have the best depiction of police officers for younger people. And you don't want your children to think that all police officers might be what they're seeing on social media. You want them to see somebody like Dan, who's got a smile on his face and likes kids.
And speaking of social media, in broad strokes, do you have any concerns about the current security level at the Norris School?
No.
So is that our security upgrades?
That, yeah, I think we're done with that list, but.
No. We've been working, we work so well with Eliza and our staff and we do it so a lot that it's, every time we go, it's, it's about finding, if you have a training session and you don't find something, that's a failed training session as far as I'm concerned. And I don't mean something significant, but every time we have a training session, whether it's police related or with the school, you find little minutia and you're just picking up on these little minutia every time. It's just making you more and more secure. So nothing significant at all. You might find, for instance, you rattle a door and you realize, oh, these doors are sticking. We can't get our key in the door. Well, let's fix that. Stuff like that.
And the debrief is almost as important as the act.
It absolutely is. It absolutely is.
You know, and there's another piece that we've used in the past, and I say we, I'm sorry, in, in West Springfield that we did, it was inter-agency and it was tabletops.
sorry, in, in West Springfield that we did, it was inter-agency, and it was tabletops. So, if there's ever any, an appetite for you to do a tabletop, I'm glad to be a part of it.
We are actually in the process of developing one. Eliza and Dan, Dan's actually making one, and we're going to have a tabletop exercise by the end of the year, I believe.
Fantastic.
Great. I don't know what that is, but great.
Oh, it's a scenario-based activity where agencies come together and look at.
What would you do if this happened?
What would you do? What's your first step? Who do you communicate with? How do we evacuate the students, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
And it's designed to identify.
Problems.
Problems or things that you haven't thought of.
Right.
Right.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call. Everybody good?
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you very much.
If there's anything you guys think of, my email's on the town website. Eliza will tell you, I'll get back to you right away, whenever you email me. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Any, any other business that can't wait until our next regularly scheduled meeting? I have one for Kim. So, our next regular meeting is February 12th. I will be in Dallas. There's a high likelihood that Dylan will not be able to attend. Kim is the senior member of the committee, so she'll be responsible for setting the agenda with Eliza and Vito, and then chairing the meeting.
Just a girls' meeting, huh?
That's going to be nice.
It's going to have an inclement weather Zoom link, too.
So, if I see a snowflake, it better be linked up to that Zoom meeting.
Well, this, this senior, this senior citizen member doesn't drive in snow.
I didn't say senior citizen.
No, I'm 100% calling myself that, and I am not a.
Listen, it could be like a little.
Proud of it.
Proud of it.
John, I don't, I found something.
Yes, Doc.
And that is, we have dates set for the regional school preliminary hearings and final hearings, but I needed to make contact with the select, with.
The finance committee?
Finance committee and whatever, whatever four days.
John won't be here, Dylan won't be here.
The school committee might have been for the preliminary for Southampton.
The preliminary for the town or the preliminary for Norris?
For Norris.
So, that, I would do that as, this committee, this committee would be typically, and we're happy to do it early, but typically that, that preliminary happens in our regular March meeting.
Yes.
And then one week later, we post for the public meeting.
Okay. That's what we were first doing, I just didn't know what the history was. So, so we plan on the first, on your March meeting.
Yes.
Would be the, would be the preliminary.
Yep. And then what I'll, what I'll do, yes, and I'm on the finance committee too. So, for that meeting, I'll try and get the finance committee to attend.
Okay.
And we'll do a dual meeting for that purpose of that subject, so that we can get it done in one meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep. Security upgrades update. Just, I know we're in the final throes of that, but have we done the PD? Have we?
No, not, not the PD yet, but we are online, meaning the people that need to have access have access with the cameras. And then the security upgrade, we have our, our pass codes to disarm and arm the alarm, and we're still continuing to work with our school community stakeholders about when they need access and when they don't. So, we're continuing that conversation, and we're not ready for it to go live yet.
Do you have a date that you anticipate? You be ready to go live? February 1st, March 1st, April 1st? Just a ballpark?
Maybe February 1st.
Okay. So, all right, so we can leave it on, and maybe in the February meeting, you'll say it's all set, and we can strike it from the agenda. Okay.
Vice stakeholders, do you mean the police officers?
I mean the teachers.
Teachers.
Teachers and staff. Teachers and staff.
Uh-uh.
Yeah. Sorry.
That's okay.
If I misspoke.
Okay.
I hope you're giving it out to the whole community, you know?
Somebody did that with the codes on how to close the school for a snow day already. Anything else under ongoing business? No? Okay. We have to re, we have to state all the names for the record to go into executive session, so if one by one, if you guys could give Kim your name and relationship to what we're going to go in for?
Erica Nishal, E R I K A, N I C H A U D, grade three teacher at Norris.
Elizabeth Colley, three, two, P D F, teacher.
Thank you.
Neil, N E I L, Alper, A L P E R. I'm a field representative with the MTA.
Perfect. So, at this point, the chair will make a motion under MGL Chapter 38, 21A, subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. I'm inviting the superintendent, the building principal, legal counsel for the committee, as well as the two faculty members already identified and the field representative into executive session.